The Lockton Tree Commission met on Fulton County Solder Water on September 11th. Due to some email and mixed up, I was unable to attend. Jim Spees questioned who the record keeper for this city tree inventory was. Dan Nelson said he was contacting Hunter. The Tree Commission discussed planting a tree in honor slash memory of Matthews. Pete Cowher advised of the grant using revolving loan fund money to meet criteria. The city is actively transplant trees from Richard Malt property into the city's Bolle Hards and Parks. Jim, Spees, and Tom Savis suggested that we start fertilizing new trees yearly for the first five years. And New Century has approached the city to treat one or two ash trees to educate residents about trees can be the ash trees can be used. They all unanimously approve of the agreement.
All right, thank you. No other committee reports?
We'd like to do a personal committee that we just had. Personal committee just met at 4:30 and we would like to move forward with getting some proposals from Clement Nelson to get quotes for how much it would cost to have them come in and look over our compensation plan. They have a point factor analysis type scale that they, you can score people on education, on their experience, on if they have licensure or something. So it's been about 10 to 12 years ago that we did this. We'd like to see if we could get Clement Nelson to come in and how much that would cost. So we are asking Tom Savis to contact them to see if they would come in and how much this would cost the city. We're also going to have them look at position descriptions. So we're going to get a quote, two separate quotes. One for the position description, one for the compensation plan.
Do they have questions on that?
We have a kind of a review, see if we can scale it down a little bit because we have 50 employees, full-time employees with the city. And we have a, the scale that you can slide them into whatever grade they would fit into. We have 26 different categories, I guess, that you could slide them into. And for a city that has 50 full-time employees, it seems we would pare that down just a little bit.
That was put in place, man.
Clement Nelson actually did that.
70 nineties?
It's been what, 20 years probably on this?
If you look at, I think it's section 148 of the code, you can actually see the different classifications and grades and all that sort of thing. You can't, the point factor analysis isn't in there, but the result of that is, you can kind of see all the different classifications.
Would it be a motion to move forward with that and get them contacted?
I guess it would be a motion to accept the committee's recommendation.
The one being fee for contacting and getting any advice just was they would give us a point as to what cost. Oh, so look on that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Huner and second by Councilor Estrada. Is there any more discussion? Councilor Huner?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Five days, zero nays, motion carries.
Moving on, department head reports. David?
Nothing new to report, not much new to report. Just working with building and business owners on the downtown revitalization grant. Gain commitment interests on that. I've had several folks contact me, probably over 12 to 15 building business owners contact me about different projects that they want to do. So hopefully we'll get some commitments coming through the process here soon. Working through the revolving loan fund, those dollars that were given to Sarah's Garden also. There's some things that I need to do in my own environmental review and compensation for the state. It looks like they're pushing their project out to next spring, so.
And one of the things that David and I can talk about is with the downtown revitalization, as he gets applications from businesses, he'll review for, to make sure that the content or the criteria is met. And then we'd like to have, council would like to have some input as to what projects are funded. So at some point in time, we'd like to, I don't know if we can charge the committee with that or?
Yeah, right now I've just communicated that multiple projects have come on a first come, first served basis. I figured that's the fairest way, but I can accommodate how it would be appropriate.
Although the first come, first served is quite simple.
It's very simple.
Which simplicity is not to be overrated.
That's correct, I agree with you. But having the decision-making responsibility on my office.
Yeah, I just see the committee.
They still have to meet criteria.
Right.
Even though they are the first ones there, they would still have to meet.
And there's no real guidelines, guidelines per se, but I'm working closely with the state. If I have a question about eligibility of a project, I'm calling them. Hey, somebody wants to fix a retaining wall in the alleyway behind their building, is that eligible? You know, they'll give me a yes or no, or just quirky things like that happen. But, I mean, if the philosophy is followed, that it is a first come, first served basis, which I believe is fair.
Yeah.
You know, we still can dictate if there's good projects, we can, you know, focus on those and kind of go that way. But I think it's fair to the community to have the philosophy of first come, first served eligible.
I hope it's competitive, I mean, that means there's a lot of interest.
There's a lot of people, so it's just a matter of God willing to have that money.
Is there a deficit when it comes to the interest we have versus the amount of money we have available?
No.
Do we have more than enough?
We should, I mean, the survey that was sent out before we applied for the grant, that's going to be, that's going to fare different than what the commitments are, I'm sure. But the, that survey was to gauge that eligibility or that interest.
Was there a deadline for?
The deadline to use the money, August 2016.
But a deadline for people to submit their proposals to you?
If, like I said, first come, first served, just get them in and we'll move forward, we'll work with the state. The information that I've shared hits on a lot of the projects that are eligible, so that's just, I think we got some interest in that. It's just a matter of getting them. As soon as people got to start putting their money into it, it's, but there's a lot to look to, so people have to plan, engage in.
Strictly for downtown?
Downtown, there's a target area.
What's considered downtown from what?
The pride and preservation guidelines, if you looked in the pride and preservation book, there's a set target area that the pride and preservation, what that committee administers and what they, so there's boundaries set there. I can give you a map if you want. But I think that's where the target area, the department of pride and preservation guidelines.
I think, just to sort of chime in, I think pride and preservation, however, sort of two steps to this one council, if you want to pursue this on a first come, first served basis. But then I think pride preservation probably will have, if I'm not mistaken, will have to pass on ultimately the project and make sure what's being proposed is consistent with the current regulations they have and the rules.
And that's what I'm communicating to the building business owners, that's part of the, like.
So pride and preservation would be a crack at it then?
Yeah, yeah, there's architectural outside standards, stuff like that.
Okay. I want to keep this just as simple as possible for the business owners. I don't want to keep running them over hurdle after hurdle. With the added committee, that's another hurdle they have to leap over. They already go through pride and preservation, they already submit their application to date. So I just, I just want to be concerned not to steer people away despite the bureaucracy of others.
And that's the one, when I talk to some of these building and business owners, I let them know that there is some red tape that they should be, but they understand there's, it's federal dollars that are being phoned down through the state to us, so there's red tape. Try to make it as less clunky as possible to go through the process and do what I can. People seem to understand and they're receptive, not trying to steer anybody.
Same thing, I want to get a realistic view of what's going to be the application process.
Exactly. Probably what happens, what's going on, starting to get into the story period.
All right, moving on, Chief Sluter.
Over the last couple of months, we've had fire chase events, several meetings with commissioners over EMS contracts and EMS funding. We think we've got a resolution worked out that should be as part of their normal session tomorrow. Right now, it looks like the post funding for our EMS contracts could, should go up to about $690,000 a year. $358 is at right now. So that involves some other personnel and some things I have to talk about, but first step in that will be getting that approved through the commissioner tomorrow at their meeting. Activities, the fire station right now, mainly Fire Prevention Month, we've got a lot of tours going on this month from all grade school levels. And also, we completed all the fire drills in the schools this morning, and all those went without a problem. And that's all I have.
Chief Torbit?
A couple of things for you. I passed out a seatbelt survey that was conducted by Refining Public Safety. That's for Fulton County itself. We're, from May to June, we're up to over the targeted Ohio seatbelt usage rate of 85%. We're at 85.7. Just thought there was some interesting facts on whether they did the surveys. These were done by retired OSU troopers setting in unmarked cars, so it's not like it was sheriff deputies or police cars where people automatically put their seatbelt on the minute they weren't blind. So it's nice to see the trend going upward instead of downward. Also, our drug take back day was done on the 27th. 67 pounds in total, 50 of those pounds were brought in by the city of Ossion. But again, we have kept our box up for the entire six-month period. I've heard from the DDA that they're no longer going to be doing the drug take back day, but we are committed to continuing taking the prescription medication here at our office and just going up in ourselves. It may be, or until the DDA starts getting heat for not taking the pills and starts programming back up. People will still be able to drop it off at our office and get it properly disposed of. And lastly, our firearms training simulator is going to be here Thursday and Friday for the police department. And we're also going to be running the Citizens Police Academy through it. Invite the council members, anybody that would like to come take a look at it, feel free. It's three to 11 on the ninth and eight to four in the morning on the 10th.
All right, thank you. Tom?
We've got a couple of new houses that are just getting out of the ground, so we've got some late starts this year. We've had planning commission approved about probably a 45-unit project that would be happening out in Glenwood Avenue, so we'll get some activity out on our street out there. We're moving forward, we're getting a little bit of stuff, and I'll be talking to Mike Rudy from Wick County approximately when they're going to start doing it, and we'll house, we'll probably have applications, people can pick up, fill out all that form for buildings, and that's when they go to do projects on.
Dennis?
I passed out a map for Shell and Tell. On September 24th, I attended ODOT District 2, the Bowling Green, had a statewide transportation improvement program meeting. Well, that date was with our districts. Open house sort of meeting where ODOT lays out all the projects that they have on tap for the next three or four years. Ours is on there, it's a little, just a little blue line indicating 2015. I also have examples of Williams and Henry counties that are available there if you're interested in those. It was also an opportunity for public entities to voice to ODOT what we thought were transportation concerns in our vicinity, in our areas. I took the opportunity to let them know that I thought maybe a third lane, a turn lane might be really nice from the Tard Pike exit north to J across where the fairgrounds is going to be, or where the fairgrounds is in their, ODOT's new campus is going to be particularly during the fair. But there are so many events every, almost every weekend of the fair, the fairgrounds, that I think that'd be valuable. They wrote it down, whether it happens today or not, we'll see. Littwood Street project is moving forward. We are working with our friends at Cleo Edison about getting some light poles moved in anticipation of that and how, they have some difficult ones that we may be able to work around and help them with. We need a finance committee meeting scheduled for ARS proposal. We need a utility committee meeting at some point in time here through the next council meeting for utility rates. And a couple more positives as far as local industry and economy in general go. As you may have noticed, Cosdoors making some big improvements and adding on to their offices in front of their building. As a part of all that, there are going to be new sidewalks and parking out front and some landscaping. Our water line in that vicinity has been troublesome through the years, so our guys are replacing portions of that so that they'll get a nicely facility built there as an unexpected fountain. Also, IAC is one of the lots that they've been using just of dirt and some stone for employee parking and staging of racks and stuff for their products. Been inquired about paving that, so we're working through the stormwater detention process with them for that, and that should be happening, so it's positive signs.
Dennis, who has, does ODOT have the, where is the underpass on Long Lake?
Do you use the railroad underpass?
Yeah. Who has that to take care of?
I would imagine the railroad, 100% certain.
Okay. It's just starting to get a little rough, I didn't know if that was.
I don't think so, that doesn't anything with that.
Oh, the construction, or all the concrete, everything is at that level, does anything is put on and whatever?
Yeah, yeah.
At the Dollar General construction site, are you happy with how they're handling their proposed plan?
Actually, I've got their engineer's phone number committed to memory, we talk often. So yes, they've been fairly good, not without issues and problems to work through, but yes, I think they've had good communication.
The Haastor project, do you know, you wouldn't know whether somebody, tell me what job that's going to create?
I don't know, I don't know that.
It was, they're moving all their offices in the showroom into the new part, and the old section they're putting into production because, mostly because they have a more demand for different colors of doors, so they needed the old area for production. Probably a dozen or so new jobs, but they're all crammed in there right now. So they're, they just want to get it so that they can be more efficient with subscription and all.
And it'll really improve the facade from this building.
All right, thanks Dennis.
Yes, sir.
Jamie?
I checked out an income tax revenue for the end of September, we're looking at more, almost 1% now. September was a pretty good month, we had a lot of business estimates coming, so I was looking to get a better. I also provided a general fund revenue estimation as of the end of the third quarter and then estimated out through the end of the year. Right now, the available cash balance is a little bit lower than the end of 2013, but I'm expecting it to be about 18% as 2013. So that's what I'm thinking. I also have a preliminary 2015 budget providing, there's some outstanding future changes, so that will be ready when we schedule the finance committee to meet with that as well. That's all I have to say.
All right, thanks Jamie. Was there a point, I think maybe last year that you talked about your interest in moving it back to a 64 split rather than 75.25?
No, we talked about that. I mean, are we even coming close to that, Jamie?
No.
All right. Tom?
Been keeping relatively busy working with Tom and a couple of code violations. And then also, I guess, I have, we have looked at the possibility of extending the period out from which folks who have assessments due on the Glenwood property, we have to pay them if they don't otherwise bill before that, like a gag on whenever there's a finance committee set up. Talk about that. Long story short, is I think with appropriate legislation, you could change it from 20 to 28 years in a day petition.
Is there a reason why you want to do that? I guess I don't understand why that's the.
There have been a number of folks who have expressed concern that their property has been, become non-marketable because of the stagnant estate prices, and so there's some interest in trying to address that. I've had a number of calls, probably two or three folks. One in particular, just she transferred her property pretty much at a loss, but she was, she needed to do that for state plan purposes, and so she's kind of an example of her problem that folks are running into out there. We're still about 11 years of waiting. So.
11 years wait for it?
Yeah, it's 20 years. Yes, I believe, I have to go back and look at the dates, but.
May, did you have any, about giving those minutes?
I'm still negotiating. No, I have, I mean, I have a resolution split, I'm in the discussion, yeah, I'm still looking.
So you're thinking that the situation would be better suited within eight years after that, things would get better?
Well, you have an extra eight-year cushion now.
These are the same people who signed 11 years ago, 10 years?
Uh, yes.
There's not been any changes of new people who have bought and then want to?
No.
Come forward, but these are the same people that signed?
Pretty much, I mean, some of the property have changed owners. For example, the Landman property with Mr. Landman passing is now, you know, held by Lintos Trustee. And I think there's one other similar situation, but by and large, it's the same owners. We do have, actually, two of the parcels have been sold and the assessments paid, two of the original parcels. But the rest are pretty much the same. If you recall, you were wrong when we decided that, I mean, 20 years was the max at the time. You know, then the economy took a tank and so it's been pretty dormant. So there's a question then, so.
Speaking about that corridor out there, Tom, north of the Senior Village on the east side of Glenwood, it just, it looks like every so often there's something dumped there, tall grass, a lot of times. You know what that?
Mr.'s property, I would imagine Chad's probably grabbing something off from his job sites there, it's low, so that's what he's probably doing. And a little farther north from there, the guy has been building that up over the last five years, the first section's a lot to cross from the crisis.
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, that's been being filled, Rupert Ozbach used it, filled it up for the, the guy that lives in the White House on Airport.
Gotcha.
He's been filling it up, because that was probably six foot lower than the street.
So he's engaged in a filling up. Moving on, first reading is legislation. Resolution 2014-18, event ordinance 2013-12, annual appropriation ordinance by authorizing the Director of Finance to increase or decrease certain line item account appropriations between the various funds listed within the year 2014.
So moved. Second. Motion moved by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Huner. Is there any discussion? Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Huner?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Five days, zero nays, resolution 2014-18 passes and is now in effect.
There's no second reading of legislation, so the third, resolution 2014-14, providing a grant in the amount of $75,000 from the Ossion revolving loan fund to Sarah's Garden for the purchase and/or construction of playgrounds.
Motion moved by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Frye. Is there any discussion? Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Huner?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Five days, zero nays, resolution 2014-14 passes on third reading and will be in effect in 30 days.
Resolution 2014-17 authorizes the mayor to enter agreement for police services between the city of Ossion and Village of White House.
Second. Motion moved by Councilor Frye and second by Councilor Huner. Is there any discussion? Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Councilor Huner?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Five days, zero nays, resolution 2014-17 passes on third reading and will be in effect in 30 days.
New business?
I just want to remind people that the full survey is online on the city website, and anybody that get their statements mailed to them, they would have a survey in their statement as well, their water bill. They can be sent back in with the water bill, or you can go online on the city website and take that survey.
Anything else? I think the people we want to come out of the surveys are only folks who live in the city or pay taxes in the city, is that what you're doing? So I'm going to ask if people like Brian?
Yeah, well, we won't take anybody outside of Ossion, if they're like within city limits or.
But there's not a sat in them from going out there?
No, but they won't be counted if there's no Brian, that's why it asks for the address, the full name and the address.
It's pretty simplistic, the way you put it in, but yeah, it did help making that decision of coming to vote.
The other new business, this is pertaining to me, I've decided to retire from the city of Ossion as mayor, effective November 3rd, 2014. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Ossion for the past 13 years, three as mayor and ten as council. The city's going to great places, it's been great places, and I've been blessed to be part of it. For my part, motion to approve the bills is presented.
So moved. Second. Motion moved by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Estrada. Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Huner?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Five days, zero nays, motion carries.
In lieu of the announcement that Mayor Shaw just made, I'd like to go into emergency executive session regarding personnel. There will be no, nothing after we come out.
Anyone in that?
By Tom, Tom.
Motion moved by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Chamberlain to enter executive session. Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Huner?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Five days, zero nays, motion carries.